Okay, good evening, everyone. We're gonna call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Simsbury Planning Commission. Time is 7:01 PM. Uh, today is Tuesday, April 27th, 2021. I'm gonna share my screen as I often do. Let me know if you can see the, uh, American flag.
Got it.
Okay, uh, all who are able, uh, and willing, please, uh, rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, uh, let me move on to the roll call here. Uh, if you are present, please indicate so. Uh, Holly Bem?
Here.
Hello, Holly.
Hi, Bill.
David Blumey? Dave's absent for the time being. Aaron Levitt Smith?
Sure.
Hi, Aaron.
Hello, Bill.
Craig McCormack. Yes, sir. Hi, Craig. Alan Needham. Hello, Alan. Rice William, that's me, present. Uh, Rich Cortez?
Here.
Hello, Rich. Julie Eaton?
Here.
Hi, Julie.
Hey, Bill.
All right, let's see. We are missing, uh, one member of the, uh, full-time commissioners. So let's see. Uh, well, Rich and Julie have both been seated once so far. So, Rich, I'll ask that, uh, you fill in for Dave Blumey today, uh, if you have no objection. Very good. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, approval of minutes from Tuesday, March 13th. I'm sorry, March 23rd. Alan, are you prepared to lead the commission through that?
Um, actually, I have a copy of the run minutes.
Um...
Let's have somebody, uh, somehow I got February 23rd.
I, I think, I think that date is printed wrong. I think the minutes are correct.
Yeah, but the date is wrong.
The date is wrong. Now, that would be my first comment.
Well, let's start first. Okay. All right then, uh, regarding page one, lines one through fifty.
Yep, so line four, the date needs to be corrected to March 23rd, 2021.
Hey, Bill?
Yeah.
Line 25, it shows January 26th, but that was the approval of the, of the meeting minute, the minutes for the meeting prior to the, the 23rd.
Right, so that would have been, that would have been February 23rd.
Or was it March 9th?
Uh, no, March 9th, oh, yeah, March 9th, we didn't have a quorum.
Right.
Um...
Oh, right, okay, okay.
So we weren't able to conduct business, uh, so we postponed the, uh, but we should have done that on the 23rd. Right, okay, uh, so, yeah, um, these minutes for February 20th, really, March 23rd, on line 25, should reflect approval of minutes of Tuesday, Mar- uh, February 23rd.
Right.
February 23rd, 2021. All right, thank you, Craig.
Anything else, uh, first page?
Not for me.
Okay, uh, second page, lines 51 through 100.
Line 58. Take out "at", at the end of the sentence.
At, A-T?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, um, well, maybe we have this line sequence thing going on again. I don't see...
I don't see that, 58.
I don't have it pulled up because I'm on my son's laptop. Um...
How does the sentence read? Um, how does it, how does it read?
I don't know. I don't have it pulled up.
Oh, okay.
I would be in trouble pulling up, um, I'd have to go and try to pull up, but it was at line 58, there was an, oh, I'm sorry, it was "it", take out "it".
Okay, okay, that makes sense. So the applicant, the applicant...
"it" at the end of the sentence, so it's, sorry about that.
Applicant desires to subdivide the lots into se- uh, separate, uh, divide the lots to separate the second lot back in, okay, so we're gonna delete the word "it" and back into the four-acre lot.
Right.
Got it, okay. Line 58, delete the word "it", second word from the end of the sentence.
Anything else that page? Page starting with line 101?
101 to, I'm sorry, to...
To 149, Aaron.
Okay, nope.
Nope, north of, north of me.
Okay, next page, uh, line 150 through 199?
Yeah, convince, uh, 159, the word "convince" should be "convenience".
Yep.
Right.
Okay, line 159, change the word "convince" to "convenience".
Good catch. And then I, I have one line 70, 175, insert the word "to" between "there" and "be".
So the sentence starts on, uh, row 174, says, "The applicant voiced that there is recent legislation looking for 'there'..." Okay, so you're saying the word "to" should be inserted?
Correct.
The word "be", so it'll read, "Looking for there to be a tax increase for houses over a certain mill rate."
Correct.
Agreed?
Okay, that it for that page. I'm on the last page, line 200 through 239. Um, I'd like to change something. Well, somebody else's got something, um. Line 218, starting at line 218. Um, I, I don't believe that Bill and I said that these bills would completely eliminate the P O C D.
I thought that too.
While I don't remember the language that was used, I think what we said is that it could completely change how we would rewrite the P O C D.
I agree with you. I, I thought the same thing. I was like, it's not gonna eliminate, but yeah, I agree.
You know, we were trying to make the point, we could go through a lot of effort to rewrite it, only have to do it all over again, so...
Correct.
So Alan, um, what do you suggest the revision be?
Uh, would completely, um, cause a revision of the P O C D?
I think that's consistent with the, uh, the, the message we were trying to convey. So completely cause a revision of the P O C D. Line 219, substitute the term "cause a revision of" for the existing word "eliminate".
I believe that's it.
In line 206, not that I don't like Holly, but they've mentioned Holly's name a few too many times, I think. You could probably take out one of Holly's names.
Yeah. Yeah, so let's say, let's rewrite it to say, on line 206, motion, colon, five in favor, one opposed, no abstentions, and then we'll just say, Ms. Bem, opposed.
Correct.
Yeah, we don't, yeah, we don't need to say it twice.
And then in line two...
What happens when you stick out?
Yeah. In line 215, again, it just, uh, um, remove the word "the" or "any", I don't know which, what, how people wanna word that, but there was, I think, um, in line 215.
All right, so I'll start reading from line 214, picks up here, "Change everything and feels that they should pause any re- pause the, any revisions to, uh, the P O C D". So let's, let's, uh, without objection, remove the word "the", and it should re, uh, will read, "Should pause any revisions to the P O C D".
Agreed.
Line 215, remove the word "the", okay? Between pause and "any". I make a motion to, uh, accept the, uh, Planning Commission meeting minutes from March 23rd, 2021, as amended. And Aaron seconded. Any discussion on the motion to accept as amended? All in favor, please indicate so by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And thank you, Amanda, for doing another good job. Good. Okay, let's move on in the agenda to our new business. Uh, first, oh, sorry.
Is there an agenda in the Dropbox? I missed it if there was.
It was in the email.
Yeah, it was in the email, Alan. I, it was not in the Dropbox. It was in an email, yeah.
Yeah. I got it.
Okay. So, uh, we have two applications tonight. The first one is application 21-02 of William and Judy Longy, owners, uh, Cardwell Homes LLC applicant for a one-lot subdivision at the property located 604, I believe it's feet east from the intersection of Firetown Road and White Oak Lane along the southern side of White Oak Lane. Assessors map at G09, block 202, lot 011, currently zoned R-15. So, I read the application. Is there someone present that will speak to the application?
I, I'm here, Don Cardwell.
Okay, Don, hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Yeah, please, uh, give us a little explanation of what's going on here.
Okay. The, the best that I can understand this, uh, back in 2003, there was, um, it appears like there were two lots that went from, uh, Plank Hill Road to, uh, White Oak, uh, Lane or Road, and then, um, I think there was another lot just to the, uh, let me think here, to the, um, east of the two lots that might have also been affected a little bit, and I think that's how we got three lots involved with this. But the, um, owners of the land had, uh, built a home in the middle of two lots on, uh, Plank Hill, the, uh, facing Plank Hill Road, and then from what I understand, they did a lot-line change or something like that, where they had the line drawn, um, east and west, that kinda divided the lots from White Oak to Plank Hill, instead of running north and south that, that, um, if I'm making sense, the two lots went north and south from Plank Hill to White Oak, and they wanted to change it and make it go, have one lot on White Oak and one lot on Plank Hill. And, um, it sounds like they had done that, um, maybe thinking it was a, a, a free cut or something, but since it might, it looks like it might have, um, touched a little bit of the other lot on, uh, just to the east of it on Plank Hill Road, so maybe that's how three lots got interfered, you know, uh, I mean, got involved. And if you look at the, um, uh, to get my bearings straight here, I guess it's the, the lot 11, um, at one time, it looks like, I think, this lot 10 and 11 had a property line that went from Plank Hill to White Oak, so a north-south direction property line, and they changed it to do an east and west, if that makes sense what I'm saying, saying. So...
Do, do you all see the, uh, the GIS map that I brought up?
Uh-huh.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Bill.
Yeah, and the older GIS maps actually show it, um, where the line does run, you know, in a more of a north-south direction, you know, from, from Plank Hill to, to, uh, White Oak.
All right, so here, the, here's Firetown.
Okay.
This, this number 96 is, uh, the Longys' lot, I believe.
That's where the Longys live at this time, correct, and the lot that, that I'm under contract with to purchase is Lot 11. And then where the home was built, that was built in between the two lots, was on, um, Lot 10. And it, uh, I know it doesn't show the house there, but I think the house is right in the middle of where the original property line was, so that's probably why they went and they, and they proposed the idea of having it changed. Now, from what I understand, what my attorney mentioned to me, that it's recorded as a, a separate lot, it has a unique ID number and a separate parcel number, but, um, according to Mike Glidden, it wasn't properly subdivided. And I guess because it might have touched, uh, that other lot that's just east of the, uh, Lot 10, it might have interfered with a corner of that too, uh, 'cause I think Mike mentioned that it involved three different lots, so that's, that's what I'm guessing, that it might have changed that corner a little bit as well. I'm not really sure.
So, so, just to interrupt, uh, Don, so, the commission, you, you should have a copy of my staff report. I actually attached, uh, the map from 2003. Long and short of it, you know, unfortunately, in no, you know, uh, will of the property owners, they kinda, they create a situation where they, they, they did what, what they probably thought was a lot-line revision and a lot split, which really was a subdivision. And, you know, there, uh, Don's here tonight, and now, this is similar to what we, what we, uh, reviewed back over on, um, this is not as, as, as late or, or as, as, um, uh, old as Laurel Lane, but he's trying to come in to legalize kinda sins, sins of the past. Um, it's a lot, it meets all the zoning stand, uh, zoning design standards, it's on it, it would have, if it went through the subdivision, uh, process, it would have, uh, you know, it would have been approved, it would have met all of your design standards. He has an approval from the Health District, um, just like I said, it was created in 2003 without the benefit of, uh, actual, uh, approval by this commission. Um, so, it, that's, that's the dilemma that, that Don's in, 'cause Don's looking to get a, a building permit to build a house there, and unfortunately, from a zoning standpoint, we can't sign off on a lot that technically was not legally created.
Okay, so, Mike, I, I had not seen this staff report.
Didn't either.
It, it's in the Dropbox.
Yeah. It wasn't there yesterday.
So that, that map right there is what Don was trying to explain, what, what occurred in 2003. We were able to find this map, 'cause I've been working with Don for a while now, trying to get him a, you know, he was interested in purchasing his house and getting a building permit, but like I said, because this law on White Lane was not legally created by the commission, he cannot get a certificate of zoning compliance.
So that's vacant right now. There's nothing on that.
There's nothing on it. There's houses on the two parcels that front, uh, sand, uh, Plank Hill.
Okay. How big is that lot on White?
Uh, it is, Don, do you have the map in front of you?
Yes, uh, we're talking about Lot 11, correct? The lot on, yes. The, uh, total area on that is, um...
Point five-two acres?
Oh, yeah, that sounds right, um...
About a half an acre, okay.
Yeah, um, I apologize, I'm not seeing it as quickly.
No, no, that's okay, just an approximation.
But as Mike says, said, rather, it does meet all the current, um, zoning regulations for R-15, and, um, and there's, as far as I know, that, uh, from every, from everything I've heard, the neighborhood is, at least who I've spoken with, are, are, they're, I think, would be happy to see something go out there, because at this point, it's kind of a unkept-up lot that, um, is in a well-established neighborhood, fully established, other than this lot, and so I, I think it would probably be an improvement there. Um, even based, I know the neighbor directly across the road has spoken to me about, uh, spoke to my, uh, engineer about it, and he said, "I'm kinda happy to see a house go up there."
Is there, are there any limitations on how big the house can be that's, that...
Um, no, the one we're proposing is, is just about 2,100 and something square feet with a two-car garage.
Okay.
It's not, it, it fits nicely in the neighborhood.
Okay.
Actually, Aaron, there is a limitation, this, it's, it's, it's supported by onsite septic, so, you know, you can't build too large of a house that may impede the ability to locate a septic system on this property.
Okay, great, thank you.
So, when you said earlier that they created, I think you said lot lines, who's "they" that we're talking about?
The property owners at the time, in 2003, yeah, Don, Don is not the, the, the culprit here. Um, the previous prop...
How, how do you do a lot line? You get a stick and run it down the dirt, or how?
It, it looks like they hired somebody to do it, because, again, it was, it is recorded as a lot. My, um, my attorney says it has a sep- he, they, we did a title search on it, and it has a separate parcel and, and, uh, unique ID number, so they, I don't know how they did it, but the Longys, and I believe it was the parents of the, um, person that I'm purchased, were under contract with.
Yeah, Mike, I don't know how much I trust this GIS, um, in this particular instance. This, this lot here says it's down at Simsbury, uh, commercial vacant. There's a house on that lot.
Hmm, yeah, Don, yeah, the GIS, there, there could be a, uh, mis, misuse on that, on, on identifications.
Though, if I could just interrupt, there was a shed, I believe, a couple outbuildings that were taken down.
On this, this lot identified as 11, Don?
Yes, yes, that's what I think that's...
You know, I, I've driven by there pretty recently, actually, over the weekend, once I saw this application. It looks like some excavation work had been done, maybe somebody mined some gravel.
Oh, that, yeah, I think that was years ago, um, the Longys added some fill in there, but that's, that's a, an issue that, um, I have spoken with Henry, the building official, on about how we would go about developing it if it is approved, and that's, that's more that we would, at one time, I believe it was filled, uh, with some sand, local sand that was, um, I think that came from the cemetery down the road, mostly.
So Mike, what, what, what do we be asked to do here? Uh, you know, the, the, it sounds like it was a, a subdivi-, you know, a, a, a lot reconfiguration that should have been considered a subdivision?
That's correct. So, so there, so he's here...
What, what was the, what was the original lot?
The original lot, actually, with the house that's on the map that you're, that you see right now, um, it went from White Oak, kind of an odd shape, almost, I don't wanna call it a hockey stick, but there was a bend to it, out towards, uh, uh, what do you call, uh, Plank Hill. The lot line that was with, to the east with the, uh, parcels that it butts it, was closer to the house, as Don said, so they moved, they moved a bunch of property lines over and then split this thing in the back.
What do you mean? They moved, they, they went out and pulled the stakes and put...
They had it resurveyed. They had it resurveyed and redrawn and, and, and came up with, with, uh, basically, you know, created a map, uh, put a line for a division, uh, created a new, uh, deed and, uh, description for each parcel, and then filed the map on the land records with deeds. It's similar to exactly what happened over on Laurel Lane, if you remember, um, 62 Laurel Lane, we had, we saw that about maybe 18 months ago, when that came before the commission? Same thing, where it was a subdivision that was, that, that occurred without the benefit of approval by this commission.
Um, Mike, have you had the, the thought or opportunity to run this by, uh, the town attorney?
I mean, this is straightforward. This is, this is straightforward. This, I, you don't need a legal agreement.
It's a subdivision that, that was done outside the rules of the town. Uh, you know, there was probably no consideration for open space, um, you know, which is a requirement of a subdivision. I, I'm not, I really, I, I'm not following the, the, uh, uh, the chronology of the, of the, of the, of the lot lines. I, I don't know how someone can just decide to do that and file papers with the town and think it's okay.
Well, under state statute, they can do that because the town clerk is obligated to accept any map that anyone brings into the town clerk's office.
Anyone, anyone, anyone subdividing a property has to submit a subdivision application.
I understand, but, but, but also, it's just the nature of it, the fact that you can walk in and file a map, um, with the town clerk's office, and they are obligated to receive it, um, this is a good case where they came in with, with a map, which clearly created lot number three, which under statute, this would be considered a subdivision, um, and it should have been caught and said, "Whoa, wait a minute, you can't do this, you need approval from the Planning Commission", and you're right, 'cause in my staff report, one of the things I just, that I mentioned was, the commission needs to, you know, you, you have the ability under 8-26H of the general state statutes to legalize or, or validate, um, a, a, a lo-, a lot that has been filed. However, um, as we discussed with Laurel Lane, this is a, this is an instance where this was done in 2003. You had open space standards in 2003. So, you have every right to say, um, you know, "I would like either a portion of the property set aside in conservation easement", or, uh, "You have, under your current regulations, the fee in lieu of option", so that would mean that, that Mr. Cardwell or whomever's selling the property would have to pay their, you know, the usual, pay the fee for, fee of open space at the time of closing for this lot.
Well, there's no benefit I can see to open space on that property. It's not contiguous with anything else.
I agree.
Would be an orphan piece. Uh, can I go aside for a second? So what safeguards are there now, Mike, to keep this from happening again? Somebody comes in, redraws a map and says, "I just subdivided my property"?
So now, uh, our town clerk usually gives, gives planning staff a heads up, "Hey, are you aware of this map that's being filed"? So if it's something that's showing a division, we get a heads up that, "Oh, is that a, is that a subdivision?", 'cause if so, that person finds, is, is told immediately, "No, this, you need to get that legalized by the Planning Commission". We, we really, i- in the eight years I've been here, we have not had an issue because of that, because we do a little more checks and balance on making sure, you know, we're aware when those maps like this come in.
You're saying that's policy now?
So based, uh, can, can you see the little, uh, aerial photo that, that I'm looking at?
No.
Do you guys, do you guys see the staff report, or am I not sharing that?
I see the staff, staff report.
Okay. So the shaded area is the, the parcel that we're, uh, discussing. Um, so if I understand, at some point, that property included 96 White Oak as well?
That's correct. No, sorry, ninety-eight, or, or, sorry, it's ninety. It's ninety. That, that is ninety. So it used, it incorporated ninety Plank Hill, not ninety-six. Ninety-six is, is the other parcel owned by the family.
Oh.
Which, which was not part of this whole property line shuffle.
I think it's, oh, I see. It's number ninety-six, but it's not, okay, Mike, now I'm really confused. This is the GIS.
We're, we're not seeing your GIS um, map, Bill.
The staff report, it's on the third page, I think.
Oh.
I know I have a lot of windows open here.
Oh, I see what you mean, yeah.
Whoops. You guys don't need to know about GE first quarter results.
Unless we have G.
So i- is this the street number? No, probably not, huh?
Yeah, I think number ninety-six, Plank Hill, is the house that's shown in the drawing on page one of the staff report, right? And then?
Yeah.
Is that right? And then ninety, I'm trying, let's see. It's hard to make this up.
Okay, do you guys see the property card for ninety-six Plank Hill Road?
No.
Let me stop sharing. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna share everything.
There we go.
Okay. Share. How can I share? Show all windows. Oops. Share sound. So this is the property card.
All right.
And that's ninety-six Plank Hill Road.
Where the location is, yeah.
And that's the Longies' house, if I'm not mistaken.
That is correct.
Ninety, yeah.
That's their personal home.
Right. So, okay, now. New share. That's the property card. Uh, uh, okay, I don't, I don't wanna drag everybody down this rabbit hole. As far as I see it, it's unclear to me what the original lot was. You know, you started talking about ninety. Ninety is not, not the Longies. Ninety-six is the Longies. The one that uh, that Mr. Cardwell is talking about is adjacent, well, it's actually in the crotch between ninety and ninety-six. So I, I'm not, you know, without looking at the, the uh, the, the change that was made in two thousand and three, I, I, I can't judge if this, if this, you know, would have passed um, an application back, back then. Uh, I, I, Mike, I'm actually uncomfortable with this because I'd really like to hear what the town attorney has to say.
I understand, Bill, but I mean, uh, the, the division map is on the staff report there. Um, it's pretty, you know, straightforward. It's, it was a division that occurred without the benefit, along with that lot line adjustment. I'm sorry, I'm trying to find in my email a better copy of that division map to, to put up on the screen. Because I have a smaller one in the staff report that was reduced.
Right.
There we go.
So Bill, to understand your, your hesitancy, are you, are you hesitant because you're not sure that the subdivision would have been approved, had they gone through the proper channels?
Uh, that, and I'm not sure that what's being presented tonight is the same subdivision.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah, I, I share Bill's confusion on this. I mean, it's not really clear what happened.
Right, you want some kind of proof that, that it shows the subdivision that they're asking for is what was the subdivision that they didn't apply for eighteen years ago?
Yeah, because, yeah, I, I can't make sense out of the, the little, the little uh, uh, you know, uh, plot plan that you put in your report, Mike. Um, I see White Oak Lane. Um, I see what I think is uh, Plank Hill. But it, it, to me, it doesn't, it doesn't mesh with the lot that we're talking about, this so-called number eleven or whatever it was.
Hey, Bill, if you look at, in the, in the um, in, in uh, Mike's report, on the second page.
Yep.
A, a, and then you look back on page one at the drawing, it's the same, so I, that helps me to kind of visualize what we're talking about here. It's the orientation of the two maps is not the same, but you can kind of visualize the drawn version is rotated so that north is now pointing more to the left.
Yeah, I see, I, I see where White Oak is.
Yeah, you can see where Plank Hill is, right?
Yeah, so where, where, where is that, you know, that, that, the piece that's shaded on page two, where does that appear on page one?
It, it, that, it's the top lot, that, a top lot that abuts White Oak. It shows three sheds on it, at least.
If this, can I, so I, cut, uh, cut in, excuse me, for, if, if you go to the house down below, below eleven, yeah, that, that driveway right there, with the existing house and the garage, to the right, that driveway goes down to Plank Hill Road.
Is that this one here?
Yes, exactly, where your arrow is, exactly. That goes to Plank Hill Road. And then originally, I saw an old GIS map, which I don't have a copy of here. But originally, the, the original lot line went right, it started at Plank Hill Road and it pretty much, it went like right down, right in the middle of the existing house that was just shown, right up to Plank, to White Oak Lane. And I, and I don't know if the house was built be, right in the middle of the two lots? Or they built the house after they changed the line? I have no idea, but I have, I did see a picture of the property line going right through the middle of the existing house and garage that the arrow, with the driveway that you have the arrow on. And that, and I think that's when they went and they did the change. All the.
I believe that map is in the Dropbox.
All the property lines, if you look at the um, uh, deed descriptions, all the property lines and everything match up from the prior to the existing. Um, so there wasn't any land that was taken from anything else. It was just the, I think the biggest change that was done was this lot line that went from Plank Hill to White Oak um, ended up dividing the lots um, as two separate lots, I don't, that, that White Oak does not now go down to Plank Hill, and the Plank Hill lot does now, does not go up to White Oak anymore. That was the big change that I saw. And I was guessing this little, excuse me.
Mike, you're sharing your screen right now?
This little tri, triangle that, oh, I'm sorry.
Yep, so parcel B is what was created. That's, that's the subject parcel.
Yep.
When you scroll, and I'm gonna scroll down, because this shows the, shows some of the old property lines. Parcel A is the house that was constructed. Now, the old property line for lot ten, which that's what this was, went all the way up to the, to the northeastern corner, and then was a through lot out to White Oak Lane. Parcel eleven, or, I mean parcel ten, sorry, nine, which is, in this map, parcel C was just a small triangle, and I'll, I'll move over.
Yep.
That basically had no frontage on White Oak, had a small sliver of this triangle here. Now, it's part of what is the subject property. What they did was, they took this original property line where my mouse is.
Yep.
They moved it to the west, they deeded a triangle here to parcel B, and then drew a line basically across the rear of parcel ten, which is the one with, he says, on this map, I'm gonna zoom out a little, I'm sorry. It says existing home. They drew this line. So if, if what occurred was simply that parcel ten, let's just say they held that original parcel line and they drew the map, that would have been considered a lot split, which wouldn't trigger an approval or legalization of that. Because a third lot was involved, that's where the, you know, the state definition is honestly, it's this triangle, is what's kicking this lot into what's considered a subdivision. If that triangle remains with what's labeled as, um, and I'll zoom in again, parcel C, we wouldn't be here tonight. But that's what the, that's, that's the issue that, that, that occurred. Um, which triggered, and I'm sorry, because I should have put a, a full-size version of this map, because this is the two thousand and three map that, that caused all these issues. Um, which was, like I said, it was filed, and as Don said, unfortunately, they've been receiving a tax bill since two thousand and three for a building lot on White Oak Lane. Um, in, in a perfect world, this should have been flagged by the planner or zoning officer back in two thousand and thirteen, and he or she should have said, that's a subdivision, that needs to go to the planning commission.
All right, and, and it, it was, in all likelihood, it would have been approved, because it, it, there were no variances or variations requested.
No. That's correct. It, it met all the lot design standards, and, and, you know, Don has a letter of, of approval from the Farmington Valley Health District, which really would have been the, the stumbling block. Um, the other, the other comment, like I said in my staff report, it's a question of open space now. If this was coming to you today, you, you would, you would, you got the three options, the either do nothing, require twenty percent set aside, or fee. So I think, I think that the commission should, you should discuss whether, even though you're legalizing a previously subdivided lot, whether any of those three options should be applied to this request or not. And at least then just say, you know, why you don't wanna do that. In the case of the other application I keep referring to, it was a little different, because that was the division that occurred in nineteen sixty, uh, what did he say? Uh, nineteen sixty, uh, that was sixty-two Laurel Lane. That was the one where it was subdivided three times, and the third time never was approved by the town. It's just another case where a map was filed with the land, with the clerk's office, and then someone wanted to build a house there. So I think that's.
The, the other aspect, I agree with you, Mike, I understand now. Uh, the other aspect is if it was submitted as a uh, a subdivision, uh, we would have had a public hearing.
So, so it would have been a subdivision, the public hearing would be at the discretion of the planning commission. Resubdivision would be man, a mandatory public hearing under statute.
Okay. Clear.
So is this now considered a resubdivision?
No, it's, it's a subdivision. Because it's three lots. A, a resubdivision would be a, a, a property, a parcel that was previously subdivided through a subdivision approved by the planning, uh, planning commission. And there, someone's either modifying that map to either create an, an additional building lot, modify limits to open space, or modify the limits of a public road. That's the three tests for a resubdivision. This does not meet that, those, those qualifications. It's just a subdivision. And like I said, it's that triangle is what triggered it to a subdivision. Otherwise, you, you would never have seen this. And I'm sorry, I, I, like I said, this, this full-size map should have, I should have uploaded. I will take responsibility for that miscommunication in your package.
You know, I'm just trying to make sure that we procedurally uh, handle this properly. Um, I'm just thinking, you know, in a subdivision, would neighbors, you know, butters have been notified?
Hmm, no, unless there's, unless there's a public hearing.
Right, okay, so I, I wanna go on the, uh, uh, if I were on the commission back then, I would have insisted on a public hearing because of the uh, the, the density of that neighborhood and um, the potential change to the neighborhood. Um, I, personally, I believe putting a house there is probably better than leaving it as an empty lot. But I don't know what the neighbors think. Uh, I don't know if there's, you know, tension amongst the neighbors. I know Don had said that, you know, he spoke to at least one neighbor who, uh, he reported was, uh, you know, I'll say in favor of putting a house there. Uh, I don't know if that's everybody, though. Um, I, I'd hate to, uh, you know, step into a pile of manure.
Just, just remember for the, for the commission, the, the subdivision is an administrative approval, so really, if he demonstrates compliance, the, the lot line, the lot design standards, it's, it's kind of, it's, it's similar to a site plan. It's demonstrate compliance and it's approved.
Right, so we.
A resubdivision.
Yeah, we have.
A resubdivision. I'm sorry.
The buildable square fits and um, you know, all the setbacks are, are, are met, and uh, and I do, I do see the uh, letter from the Farmington Valley Health District regarding the septic system. So, uh, yeah, I see what you're saying. I, I'm not trying to make this overly difficult. I'm just trying to make sure that uh, uh, you know, we don't, we don't, we don't make a procedural error.
Hey, Mike, can I ask a quick question? Is the tax bill that has been generated on, on this piece, does it include that little triangle? Does it include that partial, part of land? Okay. So essentially, property owners have been paying taxes on that whole piece, including the triangle. Good, thanks.
What, what would, what would have to happen, if, if anything, to the land records to uh, validate this? Would, would a new, a new set of drawings need to be submitted with the clerk?
So, so the, the application that's been submitted to you would have to be filed on the land records with your signature on it, Bill, and then that would legalize it as the chairman, you know, meaning the commission approves it and it's filed on the land records. That would kind of clean up the, 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 the bill or the, the health of this, the, the status of this property.
All right, and you kind of captured that in the, in the suggested motion in, in.
Correct.
Town staff report. Okay, um, yeah. Like I said, I'm not trying to obstruct this. I, I think uh, it, it's, it's, it's okay with me. Um, the only, I, I think outstanding item in my mind would be the open space consideration. Um. Yeah, for sure, as mentioned already by uh, multiple commissioners, a dedicated open space is probably not uh, very valuable here. Uh, it's not contiguous to anything else, no particular uh, um, features that, that, that would be protected. Um, so uh, yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm gonna make a suggestion, and commissioners, um, you know, feel free to disagree with me, but um, uh, I, I'm not even gonna ask for a fee in, in, in lieu of open space here. Uh, it's such a small lot. So, and, and the original subdivision was done in two thousand and three, prior to the inclusion of the fee in lieu of uh, uh, provisions in our current subdivision regulations. What, what do you think of that?
I agree.
Yeah, that's good.
So, Bill, I, I, just for, if ever, well, I don't know if, how else am I supposed to, I'm happy to make a motion as, as Mike had outlined in his staff report.
Right. Oh, okay, so uh, was that really a motion, Craig?
Sure.
All right, can you just formalize a little bit to, you know, describe, describe the attachment A a little bit? You don't have to read the whole thing, just.
Okay, yeah, so uh, I, I make a motion um, that is in line with attachment A to the staff report uh, to approve application twenty-one dash twelve of William and Judy Longi um, of this, of the lot described. Um, and that this subdivision approval will be granted pursuant to the statutes listed. Um, and, and also to note the provision that we're not um, uh, looking to uh, seek, uh, you know, any kind of open space uh, set aside or, or monies in lieu of, uh, for the, for the reasons cited uh, earlier. uh, set aside or, or monies in lieu of, uh, for the, for the reasons cited, uh, earlier. Um, so that's the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so Craig, Craig made the motion. And Rich seconded. There's any discussion? All in favor of the motion to, uh, essentially, um, let's see, I want to say it right, approve application 21-02, um, with a slight change that Craig, uh, added to include no fee in lieu of, uh, open space as well. Mike, along with the dedication of open space and number three. Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. The motion carries unanimously. Don, sorry you had to go through that, but that's the way we work.
It was a good education. Thank you very much for your consideration and approval.
Thank you for the information that you, uh, provided us as well.
All right, have, have a nice evening.
Yeah, you too. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that was interesting. Thanks, commissioners. Um, next, we have another application. Application 2103, town of Simsbury owner for the re-subdivision of portion of a property located at the rear of 133 Holcomb Street, assessors map, E03 Block 302 Lot 006-OS, Zone R40. Uh, and it's noted that a public hearing to be scheduled for 5/11/2021. Okay, Mr. Glidden, what can you tell us about this?
So this, this is the application of resubdivision, which is related to the, uh, Antonio, uh, open space purchase. Um, which is, which has been approved by the Board of Selectmen. We're just, it's the loose ends related to, uh, like I said earlier, under statute, this is considered a resubdivision and has to come to the commission. Because it's modifying the, uh, a previously subdivided parcel, uh, opens, map of open space.
Okay.
So, um, we'll have more information along with Bob, uh, Vicresenza will be at the next meeting.
Is there an application?
It, it, it was uploaded along with the copy of the map.
I saw the map.
Yeah, I didn't see, I just saw the map. I didn't see. The, it's
Okay, yeah, okay, I see it there now.
Maybe it was after I checked again this morning.
The application was uploaded today at 6:22.
I probably looked too early today.
So this is being, this is advertised for a public hearing at your next meeting, so. So we'll have to, we'll wait till the next meeting to hear from the public and discuss it in further detail.
Yep, yep. Okay, yeah, and the map that was included, uh, it's that kind of triang, two triangular pieces to the rear of the property. Right, adding on to it. Yep. Okay, so we'll save our questions for the public hearing, which will be on 5/11. Okay. Uh, commissioners, you know, there's, you know, we shouldn't have a whole lot of discussion on this, but any burning questions? We, we had discussed this a couple of months ago.
I, I'd ask that, we, we limit that discussion until we open the hearing.
Okay, yeah, fair enough.
Yeah. Just so, yeah, we can wait.
Yep, so, yeah, all the discussion is had during the public hearing. Good point. Okay, um, item number five on the agenda is correspondence. Mike, anything, anything there?
You, you don't have, uh, any correspondence for this evening, however, you will have, I'm anticipating at least one more application coming our way. Um, however, it will most likely be in an appeal. Of the 830G variety.
Yep.
So, stay tuned.
We like those. We like to discuss them, that's for sure. Okay, commissioners, anything else, uh, we need to discuss? Anybody want to share anything?
You know what, and Bill, you and I saw each other at the meeting on Saturday, but, um, they, they, the zoning commission turned down the brewery behind Abigail's.
Yeah, turned down the zoning change?
Zoning change, thank you, yeah, the zoning.
Oh, really? Why was that?
Um, well, I think they were, they were, um, from what I understand from some of the people at our town committee meeting, um, they were worried about the zoning change because of what you could put up there. However, I pointed out that we had the discussion that because it was so close to the water and wetlands, that it would really hinder what they could build there. Um, but apparently the neighbors came out, Abigail's came out against it and the neighbors came out against it, saying it would increase traffic and change the feel of that neighborhood and many of the people in the, the nice, big, beautiful houses around there. Put money into the houses so they
As is their right, yeah.
Well, you know, we, we, we actually talked about that concern ourselves, you know, what, you know, Alan, you always remind us that, you know, his own change doesn't mean that what's being, uh, offered at that time is what is, what really can go happen.
Yeah. I always think of the Fitzgerald's Food Market up on, uh, up by where McDonald's is across the street. That's been a grocery store, a furniture store, a liquor store, all from the same zone.
Yep.
You know?
They were originally in that building?
You know what else, not scheduled, but what else was discussed there by the Route 10 corridor study? Was the possibility of it, um, an interchange, change there.
Yeah.
Traffic would go behind Abigail's right through that red barn to kind of liberate the, uh, traffic.
Yeah.
Where the light is.
Yeah.
I can't see that happening, but that was, that was discussed too.
Interesting.
Okay, then, great.
I just thought I'd pass that along.
Yeah.
It's kind of interesting, I know.
Thank you, Erin.
Well, it shows, you know, it shows that our processes work, right, that, you know, uh, even though we put a positive referral, that, that doesn't automatically mean that zoning commission is gonna, uh, approve an application.
Right.
You know, they're, 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 they're thinking about it too.
They're different things, right, Bill?
Right.
They are different things. Yep. Great. All right, then, uh, thanks, everybody. Um,
We need a motion to close?
Uh, yeah, yeah, please, Holly.
I would like to move that we close this meeting.
Okay, Holly's moved to close the meeting. Craig has seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of, uh, closing, AKA adjourning the meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Please say nay. No one ever opposes adjourning the meeting. Any, any abstentions? Okay, the motion cast, uh, is passed unanimously. Uh, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, commissioners.